Welcome. Thank you, everyone. We're starting a little bit early because we have a lot of stuff today. So we're starting earlier than seven o'clock. So let's get rolling. Ordinance seventy. This will be our third reading. Is that all ready to go, Mark? That's P and B theater tip.
As far as I'm concerned, it is.
All right, let's do third reading on that. Any further questions or comments?
That was seventy, right?
Yes, that was seventy. Seventy-four is the annual budget. Did anyone have any more questions or concerns about that? There's a, there's an amendment to twenty twenty-four, and I know that you copied twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, but that's just the actual revenue changes.
Those changes are not in this twenty twenty-five.
That's what I mean. They're not gonna, it's not really gonna affect.
Yeah, eventually, maybe down the road, you might see a couple of them.
Next December.
Next December.
All right, so seventy-four, we'll do that third reading.
Yep, because it's down.
Yep.
You gotta have a budget.
Exactly. All right, seventy-six.
That's a temporary one.
Seventy-six, we are going to talk about that at the end of the meeting. Let's get through all these others first. Eighty is the fence ordinance changes. Everybody got the update from Mark, the update draft of that? Does anyone have any questions about the changes that were made, or Mark summarized?
Yeah, real quick, we, there was already a restriction on barbed wire fencing, except in certain scenarios, which is primarily for livestock. We added welded fence, which is commonly known as turkey wires, or that type of fencing to the prohibition. And then there was a slight modification of the opacity for privacy fencing. The code currently says twenty-five percent. That was moved down to fifteen percent in a proposed amendment.
And then, Mr. Ventura, you got some photos. I think everybody took a look at those.
If anybody has any questions about the photos, I'd be glad to answer them. But to start off, we also started off when Mr. Ghadadi and I got together is to redefine backyards, front yards, and so forth. Okay? I did a lot of research on that. I can't find anybody that I've called or looked online at their statutes that has two front yards and a corner lot. I actually got laughed at by an engineer. Pardon?
They get double tax for being on a corner. They used to.
Yeah, I've heard that before years ago. I didn't, in Maple Heights, I had a corner lot, but they didn't do it at that time. But to me, there is no such thing as two front yards. Okay? And if anybody wants to discuss that, that's fine, but I don't see the need for that. I went through various distances from right-of-way, and everybody has one different. I've got Aurora that has two foot from the right-of-way, Twinsburg ten foot, Solon eight foot, and I was asked to check with Mayfield. They got fifteen foot. We decided on to put in the ordinance, if it is to be passed, a ten-foot right-of-way. You can't go any farther out than, or any closer than ten foot to the right-of-way. It gives your residents the opportunity to pick anything in between that ten-foot right-of-way and their home. They don't have to go to the BZA, which is one of the things I was hoping to eliminate. All the extra work, and it costs residents an extra hundred dollars and another hour in the evening to go to the BZA and ask for something, to which brings me to another point. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, there was seven requests for a variance. All were granted. I took that to the planning commission, and they agreed that if there's that many variances granted, someone has to change and need to change the ordinance. It doesn't make any sense. Okay? And there is no continuity between what they decide.
Yeah, that's just people making decisions at that point.
Right.
Can I ask a question about your ten-foot?
Yes.
Did you say they have to be ten feet per yard?
They don't have to be. You have up to ten foot of a right-of-way.
So on a lot that's in the streets over by Shepherd Hills area, if they're on a corner, what would be the right-of-way? Would it be the sidewalk, the light pole?
What's the right-of-way?
Well, you have to determine first what the address of the property is.
Yeah.
You have to determine which one is the front yard and which one is the side yard. And then you would apply the ten-foot to whichever is the, you know, the front yard or the side yard.
So there was a property two or three years ago on that area, I forget the street name or I'd give it to you, and they approached me about putting a fence up on their house, on what we would all consider the side yard. And.
Is that Shepherd and Laurel?
No.
Was he on Shepherd?
I forget. I can look it up on the phone and then give you the exact location. I can picture it. I just don't know the street corner. But in order for them to comply with the distance back, they would have had to have put the fence basically midway between the sidewalk and their house, and it would have defeated the purpose of putting the fence up. That's why I was asking if it could be.
Okay, but they couldn't put it. I don't understand.
I'm wondering if that two-foot variant, that two-foot range that you mentioned would have been more appropriate for that particular house. But we can, I don't want it to delay or deny what you're doing. Maybe it might be something we could look at and see if it's worth a future amendment. Not amendment to this, if you're looking for a third reading on this or not.
Okay, the determination of a front yard is where your address is, basically, to keep it very simple.
Yep.
Okay. I had a discussion with somebody. I sat at his house for an hour. And he says, well, you know, look out my patio door and see what this is.
Yep.
I looked, got up, went out the patio door, and asked him, what's your question here? And he says, well, what happens if I want this? He lives on a corner.
Yeah.
What happens if I want this to be my front yard?
Yep.
Your address isn't here, your driveway's not here. That's not your front yard. That's a side yard.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to do something with this, fence it in, make a recreational area for your grandchildren, you're losing so much square footage to do that.
Yeah.
And I, any of yous that looked at the pictures, you can see in some instances how many square foot you actually lose.
You lose, and this particular lot would have lost a lot. But we can, I don't want it to derail your discussion.
Okay, I'm just trying to answer questions and.
Well, the mayor had mentioned that, you know, he's on board with the changes that were made. Nino's looked it over. He's on board with the changes that are made. And they have plans to go over everything more thoroughly next year with Mr. Ferris, with the city planner.
Yeah, so we would, if you guys would oblige passing this, then next year, this will make it easier for the BZA and all the things that Mr. Ventura was talking about, but next year, revamping the whole thing, going in depth through the whole code with our city planner and obviously our building commissioner.
So those people who would be in violation are grandfathered?
Yeah. I would imagine, yes.
So those who already have their fences up, we're not going to go around and make a move on them?
Nobody has to rip out their fence and relocate it.
We're not in that business.
Were you talking about the guy that Jeff put in the wood fence?
No, they didn't put up a fence at all.
Oh, okay.
They had young children, and they approached me about it.
Whitewood and Longwoods.
It fits a unique topographical, I mean, they'll still have the ability even after this amendment.
To still get a variance.
To apply for a variance.
All right, so Vinnie would like to get this to the planning commission next week, so if we could do the second and third on that, I'd appreciate it.
We can only do the second. We do the second reading, goes to the planning commission, comes back with recommendations or.
Or you can just make a motion to refer to the planning commission. You can just do that, too. It's up to you guys.
To do what?
You could just make a motion to refer to the planning commission for a purported recommendation.
Well, we'll do second read and a motion?
That's fine.
Okay.
And a motion to extend the thirty-day requirement that they get back to city council.
Well, you're reading it, so whatever you want to say, make a motion, buddy.
Yeah, to waive it, to waive the thirty-day.
All right.
You gotta do the.
Anything else on eighty?
When we do go more in depth, do we have, is it even possible to have a map of where the right-of-ways are to try to figure out what the ideal distance is?
Probably not. Because there's so many different houses.
I know it's gonna be all over the place, but I don't know.
I think it's a case-by-case basis.
If I may add, the idea here is to afford the resident the use of as much yard as possible, but at the same time, prevent a vehicle from backing out to run somebody who may be coming on a bike on a sidewalk or some, so.
Right.
Those are the unique areas.
So this is basically where we're really concentrating on. And I have to commend councilman here for his hard work. He really, he really did spend a lot of time on this.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, eighty-one, reappointment of Joe Byer to the Parkson Rec Commission. He's been on it quite a while. We're happy to have him back again. His passes. We'll do one, two, three on that.
Oh, I don't know. I just got invited. The orchestra's playing again.
Vote your heart, Jan. All right, next is for the job, job creation and retention sharing with Summit County agreement. Mark, you want to talk about that?
So this is essentially a non-coaching agreement regarding businesses, and the city's already a signator of this agreement. There were some amendments proposed this summer. Some communities have already passed. So basically, if the city doesn't pass this, that triggers a termination clause in the existing agreement. Long story short, the city would do some credits that we receive for certain grant funding. So I think the proposal is for council to accept the agreement as amended.
And those grants, just so to put this into perspective, those points we get are the points that actually put us over the top to get those grants. So without this, we likely wouldn't get the funding that we were going to be for.
Are you proposing one, two, three?
Yeah, I'm gonna propose one, two, three on this, so you can stay in it if passed. All right, eighty-three, the planned capital purchase program, updating?
Yeah, the annual summary that's required by the organs that created this program.
So we had to create an ordinance to even have this, you know, saving money, basically putting money away.
Right.
Program, so we just need to.
With an open vendor, because we don't allow open vendors to carry over past year-end, so.
Is this something that you helped us set up when you first came in? And it's worked very well for us, so. Let's get that on one, two, three, so everyone can have their ducks in the row for the new year. Eighty-four is for purchase of body cameras, please.
So I think I explained to council before, we applied for a grant for this. We won't know until April, May of next year, and unfortunately, the first payment is due in March, so. And regardless, initially, I wasn't sure if we didn't get the grant, which direction we would go, but honestly, we're one of the few departments left around, and it's probably in Ohio, that don't have body cameras, so we need to move on this. And I'm confident the grant's gonna pay for a good portion, if not all of it.
What's the cost on that?
It's a hundred and eighty-three thousand, due next year in March. I think it was twenty thousand, wasn't it, John?
It's over five years, though.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not bad at all. How many cameras?
Twenty-eight. And that includes storage, everything.
Fantastic. Any questions on that?
One, two, three, or one?
One, two, three, please.
I just never want to be caught on camera.
I can tell you one thing right now. In my term on the streets, every incident, whether it was a complaint or a question, I was vindicated a hundred percent of the time because of the camera.
I think residents would appreciate it very much, residents and the police officers, so it's a good thing. All right, eighty-five, the third amendment?
The third amendment.
Third amendment, not bad, Mr. Ferris, for twenty twenty-four budget. Do you want to go over your talking points on that?
Really, just the main change is a hundred thousand to, overall, a hundred thousand to the general fund, moving money around between groups, if you will. And then a little bit of money added to streets, SEM and R. We try and keep that fund balance as close to, I don't want to say zero, but as close, as low as possible, because that helps in our grant funding as well, not to have a lot, a large amount in SEM and R. So I needed to do a transfer at the end of the year, just to make sure it doesn't go negative. And just a few small changes in Family Ruck Center.
So we didn't get as much revenue as projected from the JED this year?
We did not. There was a large refund that's affecting the JED.
What does that mean, a large refund?
A company who has paid a net profit in a prior year asked for that refund back.
Okay. So that'll, but it's not gonna affect income next year? It's just for that one?
It should not, no. Net profits, you know, the withholding was pretty steady, but it was the net profit that hurt us.
They are allowed to apply for a refund after, correct, like that?
A lot, I wouldn't say a lot, but large companies tend to, and I've had this happen in Glenwill, too, with some of the larger companies, they'll throw an estimate in to Rita, a very large estimate.
And then they pay the quarterly, and then it's not even.
Well, they do it to affect their books.
For other purposes.
I'm taking up what you're putting down, okay?
I've had Rita call and say, when I was at Independence, you put this nine hundred thousand away because it might end up going back next year. Don't spend it. So it happens, not too often, but it does happen. And it's rather usually a large number. Luckily, this one was only a hundred fifty.
Not a huge chunk. Any further questions on this amendment? All right, let's get that done, one, two, three, so we can help them close the books on twenty twenty-four. Number eighty-six is regarding an emergency ordinance for updating the jail door security control system, replacing.
So this is like step two. Our jail door system is integrated with these cities. This building's fire alarm system. There's still some ground faults, and this was something we were looking at. We've got a couple different prices, everything from four hundred thousand down to eighty-some thousands. And we're just kind of looking at it, this was something we need to do. Well, now, recently, we did add a few technical issues, like it's beginning to fail, and that could be a safety concern, so we really want to move forward, you know? And the company we're going with, they did make changes to jail also. They have basically the same system we have, and they were real happy with the work. But I don't want to keep waiting and kind of pushing it off, the fact that we're seeing some failures.
So this item is higher than the bid threshold, but council has the ability to approve it to not go to bid. So that's what, this would be approving the purchase without going to bid and purchase the replacement outright, so they can get that working as soon as possible. That being said, does anyone have any further questions on this?
What is the timetable once they get started?
Depending on parts availability, I mean, four to six weeks, hopefully, but I can't speak a hundred percent to that. So this, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but this money is already set aside based on the fire system, so.
Yes.
As soon as we can get it better.
I can actually add some commentary to this. I have been volunteering in the fire department on Monday and Tuesday night, and I've heard this system fail no less than six to ten times in the two hours I sat there. It needs to get fixed.
Well, that being said, let's, I propose we read this, one, two, three. I'd like to move it to the top of the agenda, so we can get it done even faster.
Call them in the morning.
Return to body.
All right, so let's go back to seventy-six. So seventy-six is our adult-use marijuana sales cultivating and processing in the city. You also received the latest draft of the ordinance changes that Mark had written up on my suggestion. What the changes do is prohibits dispensaries within the city, but allows cultivation and processing, basically as another factory that we can, you know, get business from in the city. I don't know if everyone knows this, but the marijuana that's sold in Ohio has to be processed and cultivated in Ohio. So as demand on the dispensary side grows, demand will grow for manufacturing, so that is something that it could be who but to have in our city. And then also, in the last meeting, I had misspoke. I had thought that the city would, if the city was a host city for cultivating our processors, we would get some of that host city money from the ten percent excise tax. That is not true. So we would just get regular payroll or profit tax from cultivators and processors. We got, we've gotten, probably in total, like what, about a dozen people contacting us through email, through John. You guys have read all of those consensus now at this point. It's still a dozen people, still a very small number of people, but now the consensus seems to have shifted with the people that have contacted us recently, that they were opposed to having dispensaries in Macedonia. If we do it this way, where I'm proposing, basically, at any time, council can come back and allow dispensaries. If you get some more data in the future, if things are going well, if it's really a boon for cities to have dispensaries, then you can go back and allow those. Something that we can't do, that we've talked about several times, is once their dispensary is set, if we were to not make, not make the changes to the amendment and allow dispensaries in Macedonia if one was set up, and if we decide we didn't want them anymore, they would be grandfathered in. So that's my proposal. I know Mr. Garvis had wanted to put it on the ballot next year.
No, I was just bringing it up for conversation, and I got the sense that that wasn't an overwhelmingly supported item with council at the last meeting. And I'm okay with what you're proposing, and like you said, we can always revisit it.
Yeah, we can revisit it once we have more data, once we hear from more people, you know, get some more information on what people in the city are thinking.
I got approached today, two more no's. While I was in the post office, somebody recognized me. The councilman asked me what's going on with that. And then when a person farther back in the line, by the time I got there, there was a line this afternoon, they wanted in on the conversation, and they were both no's. They did not want to see dispensaries.
They didn't want to see dispensary.
Two more to that conversation.
So once again, it's not an overwhelming number of people, but the feedback we have gotten has shifted to about seventy-five percent of people that are not interested in us allowing that at this time.
And I just want to add something I learned today in talking to the law director. And I, he proved it out, but I also spoke to one of the trustees in the township, and they've prohibited it, too. So it won't end up happening anywhere in the JED. I don't know if we knew that, but I learned that today.
I have a, I know we get today as well. I asked her to email it. I don't know if she got to it.
We got all the emails that were sent.
It literally came today, so.
Yeah, we all the ones that were sent today. So that being said, is there any more discussion? Everyone read the amendments that were made to the ordinance and saw, you know, the prohibition of sales. The cultivating and processing is still going to be a thousand feet, which is something that we had originally asked for, the mayor had asked for, just to keep that away from the high school, if there's any odor that comes from those sort of factories. And the way that we saw on that map that Joe did for us, and that was just five hundred feet, but it, all of the areas where it would be allowed is still pretty far away from residents, you know, because of the way that zoning is in Macedonia for industrial. So any further discussion on this topic? All right, we're all good with the way it's written up. Do I need to make any motions, or it is what it is?
You need to make a motion to amend exhibit eight to conform with the most recent version distributed to council. I could just say that on the floor if you want.
Say it.
We'll see, we'll see how well I do.
Not that you've ever said it before.
All right, also, in other council news, did you get your Kent State thing set up? So John's gonna be going to Ohio Council Clerks Conference next year in Kent State. And then also next year is the.
I've heard that discussion.
But that is national, okay. So there is also a national one in St. Louis, but he was able to take some of the training dollars that we had this year, and he's gonna be the one in Kent, and we'll save some money because he can stay at home. So that's gonna be good. Always good for him to do continuing education. And did everyone make it to Winter Fest?
I did.
Did that?
I was there. It was great.
No, but I saw the fireworks from upstairs.
That's pretty cool.
Had a family event that happened.
It was a very nice event. We got a lot of great feedback. People are very happy with the way that it went. Even though it was cold, since it wasn't crowded, everyone could get in and get out, and get out in the cold. All right, well, we did this pretty quickly.
We got compliments from Twinsburg residents on that also.
Oh, really?
They thought it was better than theirs.
My brother was at the Twinsburg one, and they were just kind of sitting there in the cold waiting for fireworks. Didn't have anything going on, and then they saw our fireworks, and they were.
Yeah, but then they did, they had, because we went and picked up pizza downtown Twinsburg. They had the band, they had the lights, they had everything going on.
We had a train, Jan. We had a train and sand clock.
Wait a minute, you got your pizza where?
Teresa's.
In Twinsburg?
Yeah, Greg grew up there. It's his favorite pizza place. He's had it since he was a kid.
Everybody makes this.
Where you should just, well, we only have twelve pizza shops.
We don't have us, we all have chain pizzas, okay?
Do you need a Farinacci's? All right, so.
Just add another pizza place.
You guys are all excused to go.
You could ask Teresa to come.
Do whatever you need to do, but we're meeting. Sorry, thank you very much.
They don't need all your kids. I gotta get my wife.
Hello and welcome to the December twelfth council meeting. It is seven twenty-nine P M. We'll call it seven thirty. We're close enough. Uh, Mr. Hoover, please call the roll.
Ms. Brand.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Mr. Colby.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
I ask Mr. Chaplin O'Brien to lead us in the invocation.
This evening, as we gather to serve our community, we are reminded of the responsibilities entrusted to us. May we approach this meeting with open hearts and clear minds, seeking wisdom and understanding in every decision we make. Let us remember that our work is not just for today, but for the future, and that every voice in our community matters. May we be guided by fairness, compassion, and a shared commitment to the well-being of all. As we deliberate and discuss, may we be reminded of the diversity of experiences, perspectives, and the needs that shape our city. May we work together with respect, setting aside differences, to focus on solutions that strengthen our community. Let our words and actions inspire trust and unity, fostering a spirit of collaboration that allows us to achieve more than we could ever could alone. Amen. Now I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy Holiday to all. With that being said, our Honorable Mayor Nick Moner will now lead us in our pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you as well, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, public comments? Not everybody at once. Slow down. Good. Correspondents from the clerk.
Yes, sir. I have three pieces. First one, uh, so it went to Director Chatto. It says, "Hi, Jason. I owe you an apology for such a late and slow email. Life gets in the way sometimes. I was one of the homeowner complainers that quote-unquote that backed up the park. You were kind enough to invite us to a meeting to explain the intentions of the park. Here it is over a year later, and I'm just now reaching out to say thank you. Job well done and promise is kept. You lived up to your word as it related to our privacy and peace. The soccer goals worked out great with no problems for any of the players or by spectators. The lights, for the most part, ninety percent of the time, were turned off at a reasonable hour and not on all night long. One final note, the Winterfest lighting and fireworks, what a special delight in the street. Those lights, we never mind. They look so festive, and I know the community enjoys it. Please tell all that worked and participated in the preparations and delivery, thank you." And that's from Victoria Stuller. And then we also have a message from Gary Schmidt. Says, "I moved to Macedonia in nineteen seventy-nine. Wanted to let you know how happy I am to be living here. I think the city has done a great job lighting Longwood. It's great for my grandkids. I miss the Santa gift day due to a hot water tank that sprung a leak, but Chief Ripley said he would fit it in for my four grandkids. What a relief that is. I called the service department yesterday to see if they were still collecting leaves and told them where I lived. They were up this morning and picked up our whole street. Winter Festival with fireworks is great, too. I'm proud of our community. Thank you for keeping things running. Merry Christmas." And then finally, from Mary Sindalar. "Our visit from Santa was so wonderful tonight. I wanted to let you know how happy this visit was and how excited our grandchildren were. Santa was so outstanding. Thank you for a wonderful program," and that is all.
Thank you. Okay, moving into pending of new legislation, starting with ordinance number seventy.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number seventy through, um, third reading by title only, please.
Second.
An ordinance declaring improvements to a certain parcel of real property via public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcel, requiring the owners of the improvements on such parcel to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a B and B municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections fifty-seven oh nine dot forty, fifty-seven oh nine dot forty-two, and fifty-seven oh nine dot forty-three, and declaring an emergency.
So essentially, this is a TIF for the B and B movie theater. Um, I will not belabor the point. I think we've talked about this ad nauseam in the past. Unless any of you have anything further you'd like to ask or add to this, but, uh, we have done quite a few TIFs. We have a finance director that is well-versed in performing these TIFs, and I'll leave it up to you if you guys want to discuss further.
Could you explain what TIF is?
Tax incremental financing. It takes the dollars that would normally go to elsewhere and keeps them here to make improvements in our area as opposed to somewhere else.
Does the school still get their money?
They still get their money. Always.
It's just, we say TIF. We know what it means, but...
It's just taxes.
They think you made it up. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we adopt and post according to law ordinance number seventy, two thousand and twenty-four, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance seventy carries. Ordinance number seventy-four.
Yes, Mayor, I present, uh, ordinance number seventy-four, two thousand and twenty-four, for its third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance providing for the two thousand and twenty-five annual appropriations for the City of Macedonia, Ohio.
Director Vares.
This is, um, third reading, Mayor, and, um, I don't see any questions.
So this is the budget that we've talked about for quite some time and have worked on for quite some time. Uh, thank you to Director Vares and all the department heads in getting that prepared and working through it and bringing it through me and bring it to council to, uh, for their perusal. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thanks to everyone involved for getting this done, and thanks to council. Hopefully, we can get this done and ready for all to go in two thousand and twenty-five.
And what is your pleasure?
I offer ordinance number seventy-four, two thousand and twenty-four, to be adopted and posted according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance seventy-four carries. Ordinance number seventy-six.
Mayor, um, I asked, uh, I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance number seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-four, for its third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance creating chapter seven ninety-eight of the City of Macedonia's codified ordinances relative to enacting regulations for adult use of marijuana cultivators, processing centers, and dispensaries.
I will leave this for you to discuss.
All right, um, sorry, can I make a motion now? So I'd like to make a motion to amend the draft, uh, the ordinance seventy-six to reflect the changes, uh, that were discussed today in work session, which is, um, to not permit dispensaries and only to permit cultivators and processors.
Second.
To specifically amend Exhibit A.
To specifically amend.
To the new.
So moved.
So seconded.
Um...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
So, um, what we have come up with as council now, we, uh, this proposed legislation will allow cultivators and processors within the City of Macedonia. Was not, would not allow dispensaries. The only tax money we would get would be the payroll and profit tax like any other company in Macedonia. We would not be a part of the host city, um, tax fund, but it still could, um, you know, just like any manufacturing that, uh, comes to Macedonia, it could be a tax boon to us. So, um, we've heard from not too many residents, you know, we've been asking for feedback for a while now. But we have heard from about a dozen residents, maybe more, and it's becoming, um, more clear that, that more people are against dispensaries. The way that we have this set up now, there won't be any dispensaries allowed in Macedonia, but council in the future could have the option to, uh, amend this, uh, ordinance and allow them to feel that the tax, uh, benefits would be worth it, or if the people of Macedonia wanted it. Uh, with that being said, I make a motion to pass and post according to law ordinance seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance seventy-six carries. Ordinance number eighty.
Yes, Mayor, I offer ordinance eighty, two thousand and twenty-four, uh, for its second reading by, um, title only.
An ordinance amending portions of chapters eleven thirty-three and eleven seventy-one of the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia relative to fences.
Anything you'd like to add, Counselor?
Uh, no, we've spoke about this, uh, for a long time also, and, uh, I've gotten a lot of input from residents and, uh, council members and other, uh, department, uh, managers and so forth. At this particular time, I would like to make a, uh, motion to now send this to the, uh, planning commission.
For report and recommendation.
For their recommendation.
Is there a timeframe you needed to address?
That would be my second motion, or can I include that in the?
You can include it if you want.
Okay, also, in this motion, I would like to, uh, waiver the thirty-day time period as stated in the statute, uh, the administrative statute for, uh, replies.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution eighty-one.
I'd like to offer resolution eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution confirming the mayor's reappointment of Joe Byver to the Macedonia Parks and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Byver's been a longtime serving member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, after speaking to him, he has desired to remain on the board, and I support that cause. And what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass resolution eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution eighty-one carries. Resolution number eighty-two.
I move to offer resolution number eighty-two, two thousand and twenty-four, for all three readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the amended intergovernmental memorandum of understanding for job creation and retention and tax revenue sharing with Summit County and other participating communities.
Essentially, this ordinance is for anti-poaching, so in other words, uh, Twinsburg has a business Macedonia wants. We're not going to go poach them from them. If they come willingly on their own, that changes everything, but, uh, it's an anti-poaching piece of legislation. That also gives us bonus points for grants that we would get for, like, road paving and things like this. We've already been in it. It's just, uh, modifications that were made to it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number eighty-two, two thousand and twenty-four, and pass and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eighty, resolution eighty-two carries. Ordinance number eighty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance updating the City of Macedonia Plan Capital Purchase Program for certain planned capital purchases.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a program I started, uh, soon after I got here. It allows, it needs to be approved by the auditor, and we did that with the passage of the ordinance. Uh, and then annually, we, we have to update, uh, council on the open POs, uh, that are in existence. So we're essentially saving, putting money away, saving for a purchase over a certain length of time for large capital projects or equipment or vehicles.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we pass and post according to law ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance eighty-three carries. Ordinance number eighty-four.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance eighty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of body worn cameras and related products and services for the City of Macedonia Police Department.
Chief Yakapovich?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, we've been researching body cams for a long time. Uh, we have applied for a grant, and I'm pretty confident the grant will cover most, if not all, of this purchase price. However, the first payment is due in March of next year, and the grant, we won't find out until April or May, so we need to get something on here so we can make the first payment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I would move that we pass and post according to law ordinance eighty-four, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance eighty-four carries. Ordinance number eighty-five.
Yes, I offer ordinance eighty-five, two thousand and twenty-four, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Oh, sorry, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-five, two thousand and twenty-three, relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Macedonia for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-four to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Director Vares.
This is the last amendment, uh, amendment number three for the year. Uh, wraps up the year, allows us to, uh, make sure everybody, uh, gets paid the next payroll. Very small adjustments, um, which we discussed in council caucus.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure? I offer to adopt ordinance number eighty-five, two thousand and twenty-four, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Eighty-five carries. Ordinance number eighty-six.
I move to offer ordinance number eighty-six, two thousand and twenty-four, for all three readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing the directing of the mayor to enter into a contract with Montgomery Technology Systems, LLC for the replacement of the police department jail door security control system.
Chief Yakapovich.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as we discussed in the work session, this is like the alarm system, fire alarm system phase two. It's integrated with the fire alarm system. Uh, we've been getting prices. We've had several different companies offer prices varying from four hundred thousand to eighty-some thousand. Um, we're kind of just moving slow with it. Until recently, we've had some failures, so before it becomes a safety issue, we needed to move forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance eighty-six, two thousand and twenty-four, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance eighty-six carries. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll move right into the mayor's report. Um, the first thing I want to address today is the incident that took place at Walmart. Um, I'm going to kind of reference things I've talked about in the past, but I want to be very clear about something in that when, when incidents happen in the day and age that we live in, everyone wants to know everything right now, and I, and I get that. Sometimes you're not going to get that information right away because there's investigations that take place or, or things of that nature. Obviously, we take these very, very seriously, and I can assure you that our police department is very, very good at what they do, and the individual that, that committed the crime at Walmart, um, has been found with, has been charged with multiple counts, and, uh, we know who the gentleman is, and he turned himself in. So, um, I want to be very, very clear again. What you see on Facebook i- is not accurate. You cannot use Facebook as your, your, your news source. You cannot use these bots per se that are out there. Uh, there's one, I believe it's called Newsmax, that pulls information, and somebody pulled that information and started putting things out there that someone got killed, that this happened two weeks ago. I know it's the day and age we're living, and I get that, but understand that we're going to give you the information as quickly as we possibly can, but it's going to be in the time that's appropriate for the crime that's been committed. And unfortunately, I would like to have no crimes in this town, but that seems to be, uh, very difficult in the world right now. We, we have these problems everywhere. I talk to other mayors. This is not uncommon. I don't, I don't like it, but I can tell you that when these things do occur, our police department is on top of it, and I thank the chief and his staff for working on this very quickly and, and getting this individual, uh, identified and charged with some pretty serious crimes. Uh, he's, he's likely going to face some serious jail time, so just know that we work very hard at what we do. We try to do everything we can to keep you safe. I'll also add to that, that a lot of folks in our community say a lot of negative things about Walmart. Uh, on Monday morning, I had Walmart in my office, and we had some very spirited conversations about the future of that store and the way things are going to work. I can assure you that things are going to change. We're going to stay on top of it, and we're going to make sure that the safety of the people that live in this community, the people that visit this community, will be as safe as they possibly can be. So just know that I take that very, very seriously. I take great offense to people that say that this is turning into some terrible place because that is not who we are. We have a lot of hardworking people that care a lot about the people that, that live here and, and visit us, so please stop saying those types of things and understand that you're safe here. I promise you, you'll be safe.
With that, could you address what went on at Home Depot?
I cannot at this time, no.
A couple. It was a couple days. It wasn't just once. People were hoarding. Everybody was, uh, fire trucks. Police.
Well, this is, again, this is the Facebook nonsense that takes place.
Yeah.
If you got a question, you know, we'll try and answer you, but when, as it relates to an emergency or things that are going on there, obviously, council, you can call, and, you know, it's a little bit different, but, you know, we're not going to communicate everything that happens in the world. If there's a, a theft at Home Depot or, or, or something happens where you see a, a fire engine flying down the road or police officers flying down the road, look, I get everyone wants to know, but, you know, sometimes those things are better left unsaid, and it's more... Sometimes things are confidential that happen with that, and there's a lot of processes that go along with that. Mark, you could probably, uh, say a little bit better than I can on this, but...
Yeah, I mean, there, there's oftentimes sensitive facts, and when I say sensitive, I mean, facts that are essential to protecting the integrity of an investigation, and those are important not to be disseminated to maintain that integrity so that law enforcement, whether it's a fire arson investigation, they have to be able to properly fulfill their duties and conduct their investigation. So it's not just a open faucet of information coming out. And in addition to that, the city also wants to be careful not to provide incorrect information. When incidents happen and people want to know what happens forty-five minutes after they hear about it on Facebook, well, guess what? The information we have may not be complete, so the city doesn't want to convey incorrect information.
And that can affect the investigation in a negative way, which we obviously don't want to have either, so just know that you, you can't always know everything, and, and I get it's the day and age, but that's not how things work, so...
Exactly, and, and I would advise people, any O-Babble is probably our biggest Babbler, and they'll say, "What happened over there? I just saw a police officer." If the city has the right for privacy to protect you and do their work and not have to answer forty-seven comments, let them do their duty. They're there for you.
And, I mean, I, I, you know, I couldn't share in this. I mean, the mayor is, is very big on transparency, as I think you've heard him say a million times. So when the city does have an appropriate time to communicate, the mayor obviously has done that.
Well, and I would recommend, instead of looking at Facebook, take a look at the city website because updates are put on there when there's things that impact you as a resident.
Exactly. On to some nicer things. Uh, Santa delivery has been amazing. Uh, Santa had contacted us to help deliver some gifts to children, and we're very happy that he was willing to work with us. Uh, I want to thank all the volunteers and, and especially Chief Ripley and Assistant Chief Slinski, and I'm sure I'm going to miss a bunch, but that is a daunting, daunting task. Santa really puts a lot on us to get that thing done, but it, it's an amazing thing, and when you see the children smile and, you know, just the joy on their faces with Santa coming on the truck, there's nothing like that in the world, and, and I know Chief has had a really tough week, but I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you did, and I know our community appreciates that a lot, so thank you for all you do with that.
And that has been going on since Patrick was in, or Gregory was in elementary school.
We were debating whether it started nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen ninety.
Yeah, it's amazing.
We're not sure.
And even a step further, I want to thank Counselor Garvis because the, the Santa tracker would not be here if it wasn't for him, and this is the techie guy that, you know, I, I don't know what he does. I don't know how he does it, but it, it seems to work most of the time, and, you know, it, it, it's a good insight to when Santa's coming because that's, that's tough, too, but it's very helpful when you have kids and dinner and activities and all that, so thank you for what you do. That, that is appreciated.
Thanks.
Yes, something from the North Pole.
Yeah.
And on that same note, I would like to wish you a happy birthday, even though it was yesterday, so happy birthday to you, sir.
Get away with this.
Oh, listen, if you sit up here, you're getting your birthday, so... Um, with that as well, I would like to thank the police department for doing the shop of the cop. I'm pretty sure that's, uh, Mr. Costella does the majority of that, but that's another nice thing that we had a lot of nice donations for to help, uh, kids that are a little less fortunate, and, and that's, that's really appreciated by me and, and the folks that participate in that. So Chief, please, uh, thank your staff for helping with that. Uh, next on my list is Winterfest. I think it was a successful event. Uh, a lot of people have a lot of positive feedback about what we did there. Uh, I want to thank our Parks and Recreation staff for all the planning that went into that. I want to thank our service staff for the months, am I right? Months of hanging lights and all those that helped, and it's the police, the service, I mean, everyone that, that came together on that day to help with that was amazing. Uh, and again, I've had nothing but amazing feedback on that. Kind of stunk. It was a really, really cold night, but it's Ohio. That's what we do, right? It was dry. We weren't wet, and you could see the fireworks. Unlike the first year, we did it with all the fog, so proud of that as well. And by the way, the lights will be on throughout the holidays, so you can do the drive-through, and, uh, a lot more robust this year, right, Director Chatto? I think people will be very impressed. If you saw it last year and you liked it, you're going to love it this year, so go check that out. And, uh, last on my list, or second last on my list, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays, and don't drive distracted. Put the phones down, drive the gosh darn car, and be safe. It's the holidays. You don't want to harm anyone or yourself, so put the phones down and drive the car. Thank you. Committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission takes off for December, so we'll be back again in February on the third Wednesday, which is January fifteenth. We'll be, uh, upstairs at six o'clock if anyone wants to join us.
Department reports. Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we've collected, uh, we're just under ten thousand cubic yards of leaves so far, even though we've had a little bit of a break with all the snow, uh, most recently, um, but we are getting ready to start again. We're going to run leaves again. At least one more full sweep of the city, starting, um, maybe tomorrow and definitely next week. Should have some nicer weather next week. Been putting down salt. Use about... Been putting down salt, used about three hundred tons of clear lane so far and around six hundred tons of white salt. So we're actually getting, we use our salt this year, which is not a bad thing. The brine is going well. We've used about half the tank of brine already with pretreatment and with, as a salt additive in the trucks. So that's, we've put down about twenty-five hundred gallons of brine already, so it's pretty cool to see that. Up and running, the new pump that we bought with a grant, to see that working and happening, it's pretty cool to see it come to fruition. The month of November, we completed one hundred fifty-eight work orders in our new GIS system. And lastly, I just want to give, like the mayor said, I just want to give the props to the guys for hanging the Christmas lights. I mean, you look at that, drive through the park, that's all done by service workers. Like, that's not like some company that we hire out, you know, that's Steve and Sam and, you know, people and Jason putting together the plan, and that's all in-house, which I just think is tremendous. I did nothing but ask Vares for money. End of report.
We had a lot of, we had a lot of great feedback on your plow last week after that huge snow. A lot of people were driving through all the communities in Macedonia, you know, everyone's going to have their problems, but you guys just did a tremendous job, and everybody knows this.
Thank you.
Director Jalati.
Yeah, I agree. The lights look great. Thank you. As we talked about last meeting, utility work continues at Highland Valley View intersection. There will be some minor traffic delays from time to time at that intersection as they work through that, all in advance of the larger intersection widening project that will take place next summer. And next month, we will present to council our annual roads PowerPoint presentation along with the new roads or PCR scoring or ranking that I know everybody likes to see as we get ready to pave roads around the city for 2025. Thank you.
Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to take everybody on a little road trip, pun intended, as we go down Longwood Drive. So what you guys all see right now is a remarkable display. So in September, Director Wilson and I sat down with Steve Zernak, Jason Kuzma, Sam Edgar, Ron Fierum, let them devise this whole plan of how to do the third leg of this. So this year was Phase Three that went in for the lights, and that's where now suddenly you see a tunnel, you see things going out all the way to the drive-in. So an amazing job they did putting that final phase together plus filling in stuff. Then they designed the whole pathway around the lake, so the entire lake is lit up. So much less about what happened Saturday. Saturday was whatever. It's about what goes into the process. The process is what is amazing for these guys. And thanks to JV for always writing checks and getting us going on that. But like, now you extrapolate this out that it's going to be up through mid-January. So this gives people the constant chance to go through with their families, see the lights on their own, take pictures, you know, do whatever they wish. And then the part that you guys really don't see is the fact that our carriage ride company bailed on us and never told us. So literally Wednesday of that week, Sam was on the phone trying to find alternatives, and that's how he ended up with an ice rink and a train. Literally on Wednesday, the event was Saturday. So like, these are the really unique things that you guys don't get to see. And the reason I'm highlighting this is, like, holy cow, it's nerve-wracking when you're an event planner. You're managing the entire event and everything going on in it, and all of a sudden, you had a major company back out on you. So that was a really big deal. So kudos to Sam and Kuzma and Zernak for suddenly flipping the whole setup of that loop area to then all of a sudden put in a train, put in an ice rink, and figure out how to travel everybody in and out. So awesome job by these guys. And really, what I want you guys to understand, in 2020, when I got here, we talked about doing Winterfest and making four fests, and our team has been able to put that together. When Sam Edgar interviewed for her position, the unique thing was, in the written assignment, one of the assignments was develop and propose what Winterfest would look like. So she actually started designing this event before she was even hired here. So like, we have an intentional focus on what we're doing, and that's the part that I really want to highlight. We don't just throw darts and make this stuff up. This was an intentional focus building from 2020 through 2021. This year, we put in Phase Three, which was our third and final phase. So like, we're there. This is what we have now, so I'm just really proud of this group for what they did. And then obviously, the service team has jumped in with us over the years to get this set up. This is, I don't know, I'm going to actually go out on a limb and say, our crew is a professional crew now. I mean, they could, we don't want to...
You're going to be hiring them out, is what you're saying?
We can contract them out to other places to do light setups and revenue stream to pay for the lights.
There you go.
There we go. So kudos to them. I thank them and I thank all of our departments here in the city for coming together Saturday to make that happen. It's a lot of moving parts, four hours outside freezing your butt off to make it all happen. So I really appreciate everybody coming together to make that happen. And final piece I'll say now is, you guys all know we won that gold medal in 2024, back-to-back years of winning that gold medal, which was really cool. Now, one of the things I really want to highlight is that Jim Clark, our aquatics manager, he got, so we have the OPRA, which is Ohio Parks and Recreation Association, the annual state conference is in February. So he was selected to be a speaker to talk aquatic safety, which I thought was really cool. And then I also got selected to do two presentations there, which I think is really neat. One of them's about building a team, one of them's about building for the future. So I think those are really cool things to just kind of say, guys, look, it's not just winning a gold medal award, it's like literally the stuff we're doing day by day by day is things people in the state are trying to learn from. So kudos to this team for what they've been doing, and now I'll shut up. Thank you.
That was so long, I forgot what I was going to say.
Good. Rita's are doing.
Rita, Rita Hatchery funds.
I hope it's as good as that.
Using salt and brine is never a good thing from a budget standpoint. Just want to point that out.
Well, he's having his first real winner in Northfield, Ohio.
Exactly, exactly.
EP, you like it?
I propose, well, it's Kyle's birthday tomorrow.
Yay.
So Kyle's birthday tomorrow, Jeff's birthday yesterday. I propose we all go out and have one drink afterwards to celebrate. End of report.
Something low-key.
Something low-key. Just one.
Wait a minute. It's also Mr. Jalati's birthday tomorrow.
Oh.
See, I'm not looking ahead, so I apologize to Director Collins and Director Jalati, but happy birthday to both of you tomorrow.
Oh, no. Friday the 13th as well.
I was born on a Friday.
Well, that's not a surprise.
Tell me something that doesn't shock me.
End of report. Well, you got Trump on that report. Director Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. Thirty-nine helped us tickets since the last meeting. Just want to take an opportunity to thank the service department and the rec department and the fire department and the police department and everybody for a great holiday fest, and we wish everyone a happy holiday and a healthy new year. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Commissioner Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor. I was asked to be brief, so I'm going to be brief. The other thing I'll talk about will be the sidewalk program. Phase Two, which is the final phase, which includes the whole city, is being completed. The residents have been notified. We sent out about four hundred notices. We received a little over a hundred calls, emails, texts. I responded personally to about eighty of them. I visited about fifty-six residents, and I was very pleased with the conversation that I had with them. I think the residents realized that there is a need for it. They are pleased that the city is given an opportunity to make three payments interest-free, you know, within three years. As a matter of fact, ten residents, they already have complied, and one of them already sent a payment, which we had to return. So I'm very pleased how this program is going. We are way ahead of last year. We plan on going out for bits really soon, which should be better than last year because when we did it last year, I think most of the contractors already had plenty of work, so we didn't get too many bits. So this year, the program is going to be a lot more. We, you know, like four hundred homes, there's going to be a lot of sidewalks to be done, and I think the price is going to be even better. So this will end my report.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If there wasn't, if there's a resident that did not receive the letter and they believe that their sidewalk needs to be replaced, can they get in on the program?
Call the building department.
All right.
If there's any questions, comments, concerns, criticisms, tell them to call the building department, please.
Will do.
We appreciate that. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Benefit enrollment for the city ended today, and we closed it out. Our file was prepared, and we will be submitting that file to our carriers, and employees will be receiving their new cards and their benefits for 2025. End of report, sir.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. September, we're living in the past. December 4th, we responded. We got a report of three hikers in the area of Brandywine Falls had wandered off a trail, and then one of them ultimately fell off a fifteen-foot cliff. Took us a couple hours to rescue them with a technical rescue team, and one subject was transported to the hospital. Everything simply as a reminder, as a favor to national parks, they are requesting when you go to the national parks, please stay on the trails, do not venture off, and dress appropriately for the weather. These individuals were not, they were in hoodies. And if you, that evening, it was raining at about thirty-four degrees, so it was a very chilly night. We've already exceeded our call volume from last year. When Chief Black and I worked on this program, proposal, I guess you'd say, to combine with Northfield Center, we were working on a premise of about thirty-two hundred calls a year. This year, we will get very close to, if not exceed, four thousand seven hundred calls. So we're very busy. It's working out well, and Santa delivery was an absolute screaming success as usual. Northfield Center's being finished up tonight. And just for a point of clarification, Mr. Garvis has to return to Santa the trackers he has on him because he will not allow us to track him on Christmas Eve. So don't ask us to do that. We've had people ask in the past, and I would like to wish everybody a happy holidays and a happy new year and a healthy new year.
Thank you. Chief Jakapovich.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you mentioned Shop of the Cop. It is this Saturday, and I'd like to thank the community for their generous support. The Macedonia Police Department is able to sponsor sixteen youngsters that they'll be taking on the adventure with Shop of the Cop. Also, this Monday, we had another new police officer start with us. Chad Schaefer comes to us with two years' experience, and we're very happy to have him onboard. End of report.
Thank you. Director Ghadetti.
No worries, sir.
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
Can I make a couple comments?
Sure.
Real brief. I would like to thank all the residents that did reach out to us with respect to Ordinance 76. I'd also like to just mention, and I do every year, that we have an elaborate Christmas light display. It does not come anywhere near what the parks are doing, but if you're interested into synchronized Christmas lights, our house on Firestone Lane will be lit at least through January 1st. It's synchronized to Christmas music and some non-Christmas music. There's a webpage you can go to, there's a URL or a QR code in the front yard, and you can look up Garvis Family Lights on Facebook if you'd like to control the show from your phone and change what song it's playing. It's ninety-eight, twenty-one, first and last.
Well, that's lit.
It is lit, like this suit.
Why'd you turn your lights off on here?
I didn't turn it on because I figured it would be disruptive.
Did they? Yeah.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Not yet. I have one other thing.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to wish Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, too. We are the city of lights. There's the Berkshire lights, there's the Crow...
Thank you.
Trail lights.
Martin, Martin.
The Berkshire one was started by the family's kid. It wasn't dad who did it, it was the son. And also played with music, and they all put the, you have the big sign out of which station to tune into.
Yeah, we're eighty-seven point nine.
Yes, so it's real nice. The other thing I'd like to say, this is going to be news to all of you, I'm submitting my resignation effective December 31st, which means I will be my last day as a council member, and so effective January 1st, I'll have to have a new council member. Greg and I have chosen to downsize. Our house is one that's ready for a family with kids, and there hasn't been kids in it for quite a while. And so we're going to one-floor, no basement, double garage, sunroom, bungalow, but it's out of the town. We have been looking in Macedonia and outside of Macedonia, but price-wise, you know, we had to look and be careful. So what happens then, after twenty-eight, twenty-eight years of serving, we'll be walking out. You'll see, you know, the moving truck pretty soon, but we won't be out till after the first of the year. What happens to my seat on council? We have one year left in the current term, so city council has a responsibility to appoint the new representative. I would suggest that you look at the website because they'll be putting information out there so that you can submit a resume with your qualifications as well. I would suggest you include why you want to do this. I would also suggest that we look at some younger population who, decisions that they make will impact them twenty years from now, they'll still be here. I also like to look into some diversity and see, we've had quite a few people always think they want to do it, but this is your opportunity. The only other thing is, it's for one year because the seat is up for election next year. So if you get it, you serve for 2025, but the next four years will be up for election. It's my pleasure and honor to serve the public. I've always said, I work for you, not for me. So I appreciate it and thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.